Well, I guess we can go ahead and get started. First of all, hello and welcome to the Austin for All People Press Conference. I'm Stacy Slaton with Elizabeth Christian Public Relations and I'll be your host for today. I do want to start off by saying this is a virtual press conference and hopefully we've got all the kinks knocked out by now, but there could be some technical difficulties. So if that does occur, just bear with us and we'll do our best. First off, we'd like to thank our Austin City Council members for joining us and the ones who are in attendance today, as well as the Austin for All People volunteer leadership. We also have several Austin citizens who have taken time out of their day to show their support for this issue. So we want to thank you all for joining us. Today, we will be discussing the proposed Charter Amendment, Proposition F, which aims to establish a mayor council form of government, often referred to as Strong Mayor. Now, this amendment will be on the May 1 ballot and we're here today to hear why a majority of our city council members and Austin for All People's leadership oppose Prop F. Now, we will only be discussing Prop F today as it is the only amendment that Austin for All People have taken a stance on. Now, before we turn it over to our speakers, let's hear from a number of concerned citizens who also care deeply about this issue.
On May 1st, the citizens of Austin will decide whether to change our form of government. We oppose Proposition F.
Why would we change our former city government away from what got us to where we are today? And, and at the end of the day, that's really the reason why I'm a co-chair, is to help preserve who we are as a city.
Those proposing Proposition F want you to believe that our current form of government is racist. That is not only wrong, but is an insult to people who lived the black experience, do anti-racism work, and have died in this fight for racial equality.
I don't understand how anyone can say that the city manager form of government is inherently racist. I grew up in Birmingham, Alabama during segregation days. I know racism when I see it. Under a certain leadership, it could function that way, but function does not make it inherently that way.
I'm opposed to Proposition F because the entire process has lacked transparency. There's been no opportunity for a public debate. There have been no focus groups. Why these individuals are pushing so hard for the adoption of a form of government that's so radically different from what the city has had for decades and which has served our city well?
And I hear it from the residents and my constituents specifically in my district, but it's all across the city. They feel like when they have a concern, if the mayor doesn't agree, no matter what the city council would do, the mayor could veto it. Because if this strong mayor passes, if Proposition F passes, your voice will never again have the amount of power that it does today.
Labor believes Prop F is nothing more than a veiled attempt to consolidate power and unfortunately put frontline and essential workers at risk. That's why the Labor's International Union of North America is fighting to make sure this does not pass.
I think the system works the way it works right now. You have a certified professional in the city manager take charge of, of the administration and, and you have a council of community leaders and people who are invested in their districts and know what goes on, making the decisions. And it's a perfect balance. It's best of both worlds. It gets things done.
For over a hundred years, the city of Austin has governed ourselves with a strong city manager form of government, and it's been successful. And along with the recent change, only seven years ago, to go to district representation, those work together. And we feel like consolidating that into a single position with the mayor is not good for the citizens of Austin.
Historically, they're more corrupt, subject to corruption and fraud than the council manager system. And the reason for that is that they can bestow favors and create obligations that people to them.
Public health and public safety are two of the most important things that a city does. And we don't need to bring in politics into that. And that's what I'm afraid would happen if we vote for Strong Mayor.
I am a common sense citizen of Austin who cares about the attractiveness, the economic viability of the city, but without it going overboard, and I oppose Proposition F. F is in failure.
So I think it's important for voters to understand, if this goes through, your mayor is the one who's going to put department heads in each department. Man, don't Chicago my Austin. Keep cronyism out of City Hall.
I think a broad coalition has come up and spoken against the Strong Mayor Form of Government. We are all unified in agreeing that a Strong Mayor would limit power from the people and give it to one person. And that is something that we can all agree is not good.
How are you supposed to know what's going on in your community? Who are you supposed to go and talk to? So for me, at first I felt angry. I felt frustrated. I felt like I wasn't considered in this. And I feel like that's not what Austin is.
Have you voted in a may election? Almost nobody does. And that really makes me question why we need to do this now. And if we're trying to be progressive and we're trying to represent democracy, why are we putting it on such a low turnout election?
Eight years ago, we adopted a council form of government that represented each of those cultural, economic, and ethnic diversity on our council. Why would we ever vote to put all of that collective voice into one person? That one person would then have no need to either respect or listen to those diverse voices. I oppose Proposition F because I believe the collective wisdom of those voices is better for Austin.
I've been around city government for over 35 years. I've seen nine mayors. I've seen seven city managers. And this system works for us. And why would we tinker with it now?
By having the Strong Mayor, it would take away the hard work that the city of Austin, the community has done to bring the 10-1 in where we all have fair and equal representation.
I was the chairman of the Charter Commission, which adopted and passed through the single member districts. We had decades of input from people on this and finally got done. This other Strong Mayor Form of Government, not now. I don't know why it's needed.
The manager form of government evolved as a reaction to excesses of the Strong Mayor. And we've seen recently what an aspiring autocrat can do to forms of government. I just don't want to open that door.
We all know this is bad for the city of Austin. And all of us together can make a difference and we can win this thing and keep Austin Austin.
So it is clear that there is united opposition to Proposition F from across the political spectrum. And we want to thank you to all of those who spoke out. With that, I'm going to turn things over to Austin for All People's Director of Community Engagement, Nika Ramsey.
Thank you, Stacy. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd first like to introduce Austin for All People co-chair, Jesus Garza. Jesus is a former Austin City Manager serving from 1994 to 2002. He also served as CEO of Seton Healthcare Family. Jesus?
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be with you, be here today with you. I'm proud to be one of the four people co-chairing the citizens group called Austin for All People, which formed about three months ago to educate the public about the significant problems Austin would face if we switch our form of government to a Strong Mayor structure. What strikes me about the video we just saw is the unique, unique mix of people and groups they represent. It's not often that business and labor come together on issues in Austin, but it's, but it's pushed to change a Strong Mayor Form of Government has done just that. Nobody seems to like Prop Proposal, except the people that are proposing it. Proposition F is garnering opposition from all over town. Switch to Strong Mayor includes a wide range of interests. The Real Estate Council of Austin, the Liberal Austin Democrats, the Central Labor Council, Unite Here Local 23, Leuna Local 1095, the Austin EMS Association, SOS, and Sierra Club. That list is growing by the day. And the best I can tell, Proposition F has not garnered a single resolution to certain significant groups. And the reason is simple. This is a proposition that would extraordinarily damage democracy in Austin. Instituting a so-called Strong Mayor System means that all the power at City Hall is essentially consolidated in one person, a mayor elected to two four-year terms. This mayor would be able to appoint virtually every department head in our government, from Austin Energy to Airport to Zoning and Planning. That means appointees would be the personification of political cronyism. A great deal of power would be taken away from your elected city council members, many of whom are here today. The mayor would set the entire city council agenda, the council agenda, and not even attend council meetings. The public therefore would have an extremely hard time having access to the most powerful leader in the city. Perhaps most troubling is the mayor would have full veto over everything the council does. And to override that veto would take a two-thirds vote to the city council or a super majority, an extremely tall political hurdle. Basically, the mayor can do pretty much anything he or she wants to do and no one can stop it. There would be very little accountability, checks and balances on this power. The bottom line, the council manager form of government works. Studies show that cities with council manager forms of government have better bond ratings and economic health than the Strong Mayor big cities that the proponents keep bringing up. I believe many of you will join me in saying that Austin does not want to be or model ourselves after Los Angeles, New York, Chicago. Or I hope you'll join me in opposing Proposition F. Now I want to turn it back over to Nika.
Thank you, Jesus. Up next is Austin City Council Member, District 2, Vanessa Fuentes. Councilmember Fuentes worked at the Texas State Capitol on criminal justice reform during the 83rd legislative session. And before that, she spent six years working for the American Heart Association with a focus in policymaking. Then Councilmember Fuentes.
Thank you, Nika. Hello, good afternoon. I'm here before you today as a recently elected council member, still within my first 90 days on the job. I'm the second ever Latina to serve on city council, and it's not lost on me the hard fought progress that our community forged in order for me to win a seat at the city council decision-making table. I believe a Strong Mayor System does not allow for the type of community input or balanced decision-making that our city benefits from today. Austin's current council manager structure has been essential in equalizing the diverse interests of council while allowing us to focus on a truly representative democracy. Austin is at a crossroads of significant challenges, including, including the ongoing pandemic, skyrocketing housing prices, and transforming public safety. There's absolutely no evidence that Proposition F will help us better address these challenges and have meaningful conversations needed to create the policies that will successfully guide our community over the years ahead. With just a little over six years under our belts in the 10-1 system, which provided us with more minority voices at the table, why would we want to suddenly change the configuration of the table and move away from our current form of government? This would dilute the power of district-level representatives. We are in the midst of a pandemic, just a month out from the winter storm disaster. This is not a time for us to shift the dynamic. I recognize all systems are inherently flawed and are not perfect, but I cannot support a change that would weaken the voices like mine providing district-level representation. I am a no on Prop F and I hope you'll join me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fuentes. Next up is Austin City Council Member, District 3, Sabino Pio Renteria. Councilmember Renteria spent 34 years with IBM as a computer and printer technician. He has served on several boards and participated for 14 years on the Community Development Commission, eight years as, as its chair. Councilmember?
Thank you. Good afternoon. I am Councilmember Pio Renteria. You know, in 2014, after a long struggle for equity in our city moved to a geographic representation, single-member district has been a long time coming. It was a hard fight. And before that, and starting way back in the 50s, we were demanding a single-member district. And we got, we went, we lost the elections and we sued in the court. And they came up in the 70s with a gentleman agreement that reserved two seats out of seven seats for people of color. That all changed in 2014 election cycle. And since the election, our council has continued to become more diverse. A move to Strong Mayor undermines our city march toward progress. Given the Strong Mayor veto power over one of our, one of our most diverse city councils weakened the voice of community people and add needless barriers between our, our community and City Hall. This is a move to take away our seats from the table. Vote no for Prop F. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Renteria. Next, we have Austin City Council Member, District 5, Anne Kitchen. Councilmember Kitchen is an attorney and healthcare consultant. She also serves as Chair of the City of Austin's Mobility Committee and serves on the Austin Energy Committee, Public Utilities Committee, and Vice Chair of the Housing and Community Development Committee. Councilmember?
Hi, everyone. My name is Anne Kitchen and I'm proud representative of South Austin District 5. I join my colleagues in saying no on Proposition F. It is undemocratic. It concentrates power in one elected official, undermines our district representation. And it is, I want to talk a bit about South Austin. It takes away voices from our city, as others have said. It takes away our voice in South Austin. You know, I was proud to be Vice Chair of the Charter Commission that Senator Barantos mentioned and proud to help bring district representation after many, many years of struggle, as Councilmember Renteria mentioned. And this negates that. It takes away our voice in South Austin. When I first started serving for District 5, you know, almost seven years ago, I heard from people who had never touched City Hall. They didn't think City Hall was for them. They didn't think the city listened to them. District representation gives people a voice, a person who is their person that they can reach out to. I want to say one other quick thing about this. When you look at the ballot language, we were very, we really thought hard about making sure this ballot language was transparent and told people what was happening. As you've heard, it's veto power over all legislation, which includes the budget. And there is no articulated or authority to require the mayor to implement council decisions. So again, there is no evidence that there is some problem that this is going to address. There is no evidence that this will help the city address the challenges that we have in front of us. As Council, as Councilmember Fuentes said, you know, the bottom line, if we need anything, we need more voices. We need to listen to people. This is undemocratic and that is why I oppose it. And I hope you will join me in saying no on Prop F.
Thank you, Councilmember Kitchen. Up next is Austin City Council Member, District 7, Leslie Poole. Councilmember Poole served at the Travis County Constable's Office, was treasurer and member of the Executive Board of Livable City, and was a co-founder of the Bull Creek Road Coalition. Councilmember?
Thanks, Nika. I'm sure proud to be part of this beautifully diverse company of Austinites to oppose the Strong Mayor Proposition. I first heard that this effort was afoot last summer, just as the realities of the pandemic were sinking in. And before we knew that the virus would in fact be altering our lives so fundamentally and which of course we all now know and need to well. Since that time and after much thought, discussion, and research, I'm here today to state that I absolutely oppose Proposition F. Here are my top two reasons why I oppose Proposition F, the Strong Mayor Charter Amendment. First, amassing power and veto authority in one person is undemocratic. True democracy is representation from all voices across the city, each with equal authority in governance. We have that now with our single-member district council. And second, the idea of a Strong Mayor fixing everything is, well, it's magical thinking and it's patriarchal. The actual work of running this city is way harder than that, as we all know. The broad spectrum of opposition to Proposition F demonstrated here today has coalesced seemingly overnight. It was less than three months ago. It was this January when word of the initiative became public. The spectrum here today, from business leaders to labor groups, from developers to environmentalists all across our city. The idea of a Strong Mayor with all that veto power is disliked by all for the simple reason that it gives the mayor of Austin too much power. Please join me in voting no on Proposition F. Thanks. Back to you, Nika.
Thank you, Councilmember Poole. Next, we have Austin City Council Member, District 9, Kathy Tovo. Prior to taking office, Councilmember Tovo taught writing and interdisciplinary studies at the college level and worked with Humanities Texas, the state partner of the National Endowment of, for the humanities. Councilmember?
Thank you. Thanks very much. And thanks to everyone who's gathered here together. Kathy Tovo and I have the honor of serving on the Austin City Council and representing District 9. And I join my council colleagues and important community leaders here today in opposing Proposition F. Conceived by private individuals embedded through a process, as you know, that unfolded during a pandemic, Proposition F would transform Austin's system of representative government. It diminishes your voice and your vote at City Hall and it hands over too much control over policy and day-to-day workings of your city into the hands of an elected Strong Mayor. Proposition F is not good government. It takes power away from the people. It's not what's best for Austin. And I urge you to join me in voting no. Proposition F, as my colleagues have articulated, diminishes the power of our representative 10-1 council by giving the mayor the ability to veto council actions. And I've served on council long enough to have seen, and as a community member, having watched before I became a council member, I've seen some, some differences of opinion between the council and the mayor. And I think it's, it's really important that we have that balance and that balanced, balanced elected representatives who are responsive directly to their constituents. The private individuals who brought this forward in the midst of, of this pandemic would transfer the operations of the city from a professional with management expertise to an elected mayor who may or may not have the necessary skills. You know, Austin is a city with a budget of $4.1 billion and an employee base of more than 13,040 different departments. And in addition to departments like the library and our police department and other public safety arms, we also, the city of Austin also operates its own electric utility, its own water utility, and its own airport. The city managers who we hire here in the city of Austin have the training and expertise that equip them to manage the day-to-day operations of an enterprise this large. And few candidates for the position of a Strong Mayor would step into the job with anything close to adequate preparation or the skills necessary to run the day-to-day operations well. There's also some potential for politicizing even the most basic city functions, like which streets are going to get sidewalks or which neighborhoods are going to get parks and other amenities. And it could jeopardize some of the city's success as the mayor, as you know, would be appointing department heads in really critical areas like at our utilities and our airport. Those who are bringing forward this proposal have said that the voters need to be able to hold their government more accountable. Sure, I've served on the council a long time, have been a community member advocating for council actions for a long time. And I've, I've seen that the workings of city government don't always proceed smoothly or as quickly as we would like them to, and important projects can get delayed or even derailed at times. But the city manager is a contracted employee hired and fired by the council. That's a lot of accountability and it's a lot more than we'd have with an elected mayor because we'd have to wait until that next four-year election cycle. Labor, neighborhood leaders, business leaders, and others, many others strongly oppose this measure and the way in which we could really lose some important gains that we've made and that have had broad-based community support here in the city of Austin. Prop F is not good government. It takes power away from the people. It's not best for Austin. And I urge you to join me in voting no.
Thank you, Councilmember Tovo. Next up is Austin for All People co-chair, Pastor Joseph Parker. Pastor Joseph C. Parker Jr. is the senior pastor of David Chapel Missionary Baptist Church in Austin, Texas. He has taught preaching at Baylor University and advanced civil litigation and trial advocacy at the University of Texas at Austin School of Law. Pastor?
Thank you, Nika, and thank you to all who are on this conference with me, particularly our council members for their very thoughtful comments. I join Austin for All People in opposition to Prop F for several reasons, many of which have been talked about already. But I really want to talk about frankly, what I consider to be the offensive and insulting reasoning when it comes to race and its role in this election, that those pushing for the passage of Prop F continue to talk about. Our council manager system is not inherently racist. I was raised in Birmingham, Alabama during segregation days. I know what racism looks like. And for them to promote and advance this position discounts the black experience across the country. It's a distraction from the real issue. And a rhetorical question that I raise is, am I really supposed to believe that changing a form of government is going to resolve or change racism? Really? In installing a Strong Mayor that consolidates power opens up the possibility for political favors and corruption. In fact, a 2019 study at the University of North Carolina found that to be true in their study. Prop F undoes what much of what 10-1 accomplished by giving more voices, a seat at the table through these city council members that are elected by district. I believe that our system does need some tweaking, some transforming. We can change policies and people and practices in our system, but we do not need to throw out the entire system of government that has helped pass many progressive proposals over these years. Let's come together, my friends, to defeat Prop F and accomplish the transformative changes our city needs to achieve a truly equal society. Back to you, Nika.
Thank you, Pastor Parker. Up next is Austin for All People co-chair, Mason Ayer. Mason is the CEO of Kirby Lane Cafe here in Austin. Ayer served on the board and was the chairman of United Way for Greater Austin and also serves on the boards of Austin Habitat for Humanity and the Texas Restaurant Association. Mason?
Thank you so much, Nika. I'm extraordinarily proud to stand here today with my fellow concerned citizens and the majority of city council. I look at the progress that this city has made over the course of the last number of years with, with a 10-1 system. There is a diversity of voices, views, opinions represented on council through these council members that we have here with us today. With a Strong Mayoral System, we run a tremendous risk of stripping that power and advocacy from our council members and by extension, from the diversity of voices and opinions whom they represent. That is not what Austin needs right now. Moreover, we create a system where we consolidate an extraordinary amount of, extraordinary amount of power in the hands of a single individual who has appointment power for department heads, oversees a massive budget. It creates ample opportunity for political cronyism and corruption. There's probably other things that we're not even thinking about with, with what this system would create. For those reasons, I absolutely am voting no on Prop F and I urge all of you to do the same. Thank you so much and back to you, Nika.
Thank you, Mason. And next, we have Austin for All People co-chair, Catherine Morse. Catherine represents national and international clients in employment law and public affairs as a member of Enoch Kiefer. For over 10 years, Morse served as legal counsel for one of the largest national semiconductor manufacturing facilities. Catherine?
Thanks, Nika. And I too, I'm so proud to be a co-chair of Austin for All People and add my voices to those. Have you have so eloquently spoken already today? I don't have anything really new to add, except that I really very much believe in the capability of our form of government to the very talented city council members that are here today speaking. We have a very inclusive form of government, one that we adopted just eight years ago to make it more inclusive than it ever had been before. Why would we step away from that? Austin is a fabulous city. It's the apple of the United States aisle with everyone wanting to move here. Yeah, we have big problems and we need to work hard to solve them and we're doing that. And this is not the time. There's no reason on earth that we should step back from the great success that we've had. I'm proud to be an Austinite and I'm proud of our form of government and I oppose Prop F. Back to you, Nika.
Thank you, Catherine. All right, I'm going to turn it back over to Austin for All People co-chair, Jesus Garza.
Thank you. I want to thank Councilmember Fuentes, Renteria, Kitchen, Poole, and Tovo for being here today and stepping up, stepping out on this important issue. And also, we want to thank Mayor Pro Tem Harper Madison, who couldn't be with us this afternoon, as well as Councilmember Alter and Kelly, all for their support in opposition to Proposition F. In all my years of working with the city of Austin on issues, I've never seen such a broad base of opposition to an issue that we're seeing now on Proposition F. A Strong Mayor Structure would create a dramatic change to our form of government and would create a consolidation of power as we've never seen before in this community. It would silence people who've been working hard for a seat at the table and It would silence people who've been working hard for a seat at the table and for many, many, many years. And I think this is one reason why my liberal and conservative friends are all in agreement that they are voting against Proposition F in May, and I hope that you will join them. Now let me turn it back over to Stacy.
Thank you, Jesus. Well, at this point, we will open it up to questions from the media, which were submitted prior to the press conference, of course. If you didn't have a chance to submit a question, you can insert one into the chat, and we'll try to get to that. The first question we will start with is from the Austin American Statesman. Does Austin for All People intend to take a position on the other proposals from Austinites for progressive reform? Jesus, do you want to take this first one?
Sure. When we created Austin for All People, it was really to focus on this one issue, Proposition F. And so we're not taking an active position on all the other propositions where our focus has been on F, and it will stay on F during the remainder of this election period.
Next question is from the Austin Chronicle. Is Prop F completely unnecessary, or are there ways we need to amend the city charter that could be done differently? Councilmember Kitchen, do you want to take this one?
I think Prop F is, is unnecessary, and I think it's undemocratic. What's being presented to us is less voices and more power in the mayor. I don't see that. I don't see any change to, to our form of government that does that as being a good thing. I think it's a bad thing to reduce the voices, to reduce the, the power in our district repres, district representation, and concentrating power in one person is not a good thing.
Thank you, Councilmember. The next question is from KXAN. Mayor Adler has been silent on the strong mayor proposition, and this reporter wants to know, do members of the council and advocates believe that Adler should be more vocal on his position on the issue? And he also wants to know, have any council members had conversations with the mayor about the strong mayor proposition? And if so, did he share his position? So we'll go in a little bit of an order here with our council members. Councilmember Renteria, do you want to take a stab at this first one? Do we still have you?
Okay. Yes. I didn't have a real conversation over. He left me, I did talk to the mayor, and he, and I, he did give me the impression that he was, he was neutral on it. He didn't come out and say he was in favor, but he didn't come out and say he was against it. So I really don't know exactly his true position, but he did mention that. And, and so I really don't, I can't answer that one for him, because he never did mention it one way or the other, where he was standing at. So unless I, that's the only conversation I have with the mayor.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Poole, do you want to go next?
Sure. No, I haven't had any formal conversations with the mayor about it, but it really, that's, that's not really the, the point here. The point here is that the community is rising up in opposition to Proposition F. We council members, at least I myself am here, because of the overwhelming ground swell of opposition to the community, and I can't overlook it. So for me, I am being borne along by the preferences of my constituency, and I appreciate them standing up and speaking out at the, at their, their clear perceptions that this would write them out of the script with regard to governing at City Hall.
Thank you, Councilmember Poole. Would any other council member like to add anything? Okay, we can move on to the next question then. Does the consolidation of power in a strong mayor cause concern for how the city would run? Councilmember Tovo, do you have any thoughts on that?
Absolutely. And I think we've heard that concern both from the community members here today, as well as the community members that all of us are hearing from, and, and those of us who have served on city council or have, have been there as advocates or staff. I think there's a lot of concern about how the city operations would run. You know, right now, you have a system where the city council, which includes the mayor, is the policy arm of the operation, and we have a city manager who implements that policy and manages the day-to-day operations and is trained to do so. And to concentrate all of that, both of those really important functions into one person gives the kind of concerns that all of us have addressed. One, concerns about whether that individual really has the expertise and the capability of doing the job, whether that those basic administrative operation functions are then going to be politicized, because they're being performed by an elected official, and, and how the policy is going to really be substantially, potentially impacted, because you have a council that is now putting forward policy that can be vetoed by a mayor. And so it poses all kinds of concerns for both the policy and the kinds of policies we'll be able to advance as a city, as well as the just basic functioning and operations of this, of the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Tovo. So for the next question, do you think having such a meaningful vote during the lowest turnout election is a good process? Catherine, you want to take this one?
Sure. Obviously, that's caught everyone's attention. In a may election, following a presidential election, we know historically that's a very, very low voter turnout for them to, to target that date to get this really, you know, radical change in government for the voters is curious and doesn't seem terribly appropriate.
Thank you, Catherine. Next question, what about the strong mayor system makes you want to vote against it? Nico, you want to take this one?
Definitely. So really, it comes down to the consolidation of power and diminishing the voice and the power of our council. When we think about Austin and as diverse, it needs diverse representation on the dais. By putting and assuming that we are going to elect someone that is going to have the interests of all people, not just people in West Austin, not just people in South or North or the East, but for all people, we are at least guaranteed that by having a council that is able to have the same amount of power to then take what we need in our neighborhoods and give it to a nonpartisan city manager that works on behalf of the council's recommendation. It's dangerous to also think that this elected mayor, should this amendment pass, would have veto authority. And when I talk about having, giving our council power, it's when it comes down to advocating for our neighborhood issues, it becomes very hard to do that when you could potentially have a mayor that would, because it's not part of their agenda, completely disregard it, and thus not moving Austin forward.
Thank you, Nico. If we do not have any more questions, I think we have possibly one more question. Again, for attendees in attendance, media members in attendance, if you have a question, you can put it in the chat. If not, let me, let me get to one final question before we wrap up. So in the video, we saw that the process on 10-1 was thoughtful and involved a ton of community involvement. And this process has not come close to that in terms of engagement. But what do you think about how this has been conducted by those proposing the proposition? Councilmember Poole, may I take this one?
Well, the fact that this proposal sprang from a handpicked, self-selected group, a very small group of folks who, I guess, worked on it themselves in camera last year, and it didn't include the the regular kind of community vetting process that we had for 10-1 and for the Charter Revision Committee that I initiated a couple of years ago, I think maybe in either sixteen or seventeen. That troubles me deeply, and I've said so publicly, and I, and I frankly said so to the head of the, the group that is bringing this proposal to us, trying to emphasize the point that we could have done a Charter Revision Commission. And that way, we could have a public vetting and a better educational rollout of any initiatives that would, that would spring from that. That's one of the main objections that I hear from people in my district is they didn't have, they had no idea that this was happening, and when they think about it, they can see how fundamentally disruptive Proposition F is, and, and because they don't have any understanding of why, why it is, it makes them very suspicious and not very happy. So yeah, you know, I think the protocols that we have in the city for procedures and processes that bring in the community and advance complex and change, impactful change ideas really works, and it was never brought here to bear. And I think that the folks who pulled the petition together knew that they could have done a Charter Revision Committee, but they, from what I could tell, they never asked. Nobody ever brought it to me, for instance, and I certainly would have been willing to initiate a Charter Review Commission.
Thank you, Councilmember Poole. Before we do wrap up, I want to open it up and just see if any other council members wanted to add to that, specifically the last question. Councilmember Renteria?
Thank you. You know, I just can't understand why we would want to go to a strong mayor, especially when we are one of the best managed cities, managed cities in the country. We come in in first or second in all kinds of different categories. And so it just doesn't make sense to me that people would want to, would bring that up to, to, to the voters here in Austin to change this form of government, government that we have that has been successful. You know, we, we've only been at it for a little bit over six years at single member, and we have, we have shown the, the city how well we have managed this city. And, and it just, I'm very alarmed, because a lot of the large cities that have strong mayor, I had a conversation with Gus Garcia, Mayor Gus Garcia, and about strong mayor, and he said, Peter, if you look throughout the state, you see that there's a lot of corruption, there's people been, you know, been locked up, found guilty of, of all kinds of embezzlement or whatever. So it just doesn't make sense to me, and, and that's why I urge the residents of Boston, and especially in my, my constituents here in District Three to vote no on F.
Thank you, Councilmember. I believe that Councilmember Kitchen, you also had something to add to that.
I just want to quickly reiterate what others have said about the lack of transparency. I think that it's the way, as Councilmember Poole said, the way in which this was brought forward was deliberately lack of transparency. There's a, a process the city can go through that is, allows for more voices at the table whenever we consider major changes. This, that was not done here. And to proceed with that lack of transparency, and also during a may election in our pandemic, is just to take away people's voices and to do it in the middle of a pandemic in a way that there was no discuss, no real level of discussion about, I think is, is, is just wrong.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, well, that is all the time we have for questions. We do want to say a huge thank you to everyone for joining us, from our council members, our co-chairs, our concerned citizens who are taking time out of their day. We really appreciate you. And of course, to the media for joining us. We hope this was informative.